There we go. Again, welcome to our meeting of March 10th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. First on the agenda is public participation, and tonight we do have two individuals who have asked to address the committee this evening. First is Ms. Zaire.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, you can hear me? I can't.
Yep. We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So I know you have a full schedule for this evening, so I will keep this brief. This is a letter that a group of us wrote and submitted a few months ago for today's discussion about the school calendar, and it is signed by approximately 200 Shrewsbury residents. Dear School Committee members, As we look ahead to the 2021-2022 school year, we respectfully ask the committee to consider replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day on the official Shrewsbury Public School calendar. Last year, the school committee stated that it is not within the authority of a school committee to make such a change. However, several school committees across the state have already done so, and many others are in the process of doing so. There are multiple ways that this would benefit Shrewsbury families. First, it would signal a commitment to teaching our history in a more inclusive and accurate way, and to honoring the current and continued contributions of Indigenous peoples in our community, nation, and the Americas. This is not only an urgent shift for the few Indigenous students we have in our district, but a beneficial one for Shrewsbury at large in our efforts towards creating a more just and inclusive community. Second, the district is in ongoing discussions about equity and anti-racism, and it is clear that heavy investments need to be made on these fronts. Adding Indigenous Peoples' Day to the district calendar takes minimal administrative labor, is free of cost, and will concretely demonstrate the district's commitment to these efforts. Finally, this change will signal to the state legislator that Shrewsbury and communities like ours are ready to see this change at the state level. We hope this is something the school committee is willing to discuss, and thank you in advance for your reconsideration.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Elizabeth Hilton.
Hello, I will also keep this brief. Thank you for allowing us to enter this space tonight and share with you. I just wanted to also point out, I'm not sure how many are aware, but the state of Massachusetts just recently decided to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday, and so I was also hoping that that would be added to the school calendar. If you don't know what Juneteenth is, it is the oldest recognized holiday commemorating the ending of slavery in our country, and probably one of the most important holidays in this country, so hoping to see that as well added to the school calendar, also now that it is officially a state holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. And for everybody watching tonight or listening, we will be discussing the 2022 school calendar later in the agenda. And for anybody who wishes to address the committee at any time during our meetings, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. And next is chairperson and members' report. Does anyone have anything this evening? John?
Yeah, over the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet with several of the parent forums and PTOs, in particular at Shrewsbury High School, Middle School, Floral, and Patton, obviously virtually. But we've had really good participation from the parents and the staff, about 20 to 25 per meeting, talking about our budget issues. So appreciate those that attended, and for those that are volunteering for the PTO, thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Any others? Next is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I just would like to thank everyone who was involved with the terrific telethon that our Performing Arts Department put on last Friday and Saturday evening. Certainly have lots of people to thank. Want to thank Shrewsbury Media Connection for hosting it virtually. They did a terrific job with helping us with the production. Want to thank everyone involved in the Performing Arts faculty. Tom O'Toole, the director of the program, and the faculty who participated. The students, not only in our performing groups who debuted their online concerts, which were extremely well done, using software that was able to patch together individual singing or instrumental performances into ensemble groups, was done extremely well, as well as those who volunteered to share their talents from home. We have some enormously talented students who had some wonderful performances. I want to thank the sponsors of the program, particularly presenting sponsors, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, Rockland Trust, as well as Jack Collins and Nancy Hughes Collins, who generously not only donated $5,000 as the presenting sponsors, when the telethon concluded, added another $5,000 on top of that. The many other sponsors were listed on the page on our website that we're grateful for everyone who made a contribution. We've raised over $32,000 at this point. I did send out links to the two YouTube recordings of the telethon for those who didn't have a chance to watch, and would strongly suggest you take a look. They're outstanding performances, and if people do have the ability to provide some financial support, it's going a long way during a year when the typical fundraising that is done for the Performing Arts Department through the Shrewsbury School Music and Theater Association, particularly their annual drive to sell tickets to our concerts, none of that happened this year, and so this will really go a long way to maintaining a strong and vibrant performing arts program in our schools. I apologize for anybody that I missed, but it was really an outstanding, and the first time we did this. And finally, of course, I want to thank Michelle Biscotti and Kathleen Cohen, who are co-directors of development and volunteer activities. It was their brainchild to put this on. They shepherded the whole thing through, and as a result, it was an enormously successful program, and something that I'm sure will repeat in different ways. This kind of telethon format seemed to really resonate with a lot of people. So thank you to Michelle and Kathleen, and to everyone who was responsible for putting this on, and to, and I don't want to forget, the student hosts and interviewer also did an outstanding job. So take a look if you can, and again, just one more reason to be very, very proud of our students, faculty, and community. And that's superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first-time scheduled appointment this evening is an update from the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee, and they are here along with SHS Principal Mr. Bizidlo. So welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson Fritz. I want to thank the committee for hearing members of our SAC tonight. It's been absolute pleasure over this past year to work with these fine five individuals and really looking and digging down at some of the issues here at Shrewsbury High School. You'll be surprised, not surprised, you shouldn't be surprised. It's great to hear from them, particularly their perspective and insights. We had a meeting last week to kind of finalize this report, and I'm struck by just the level of intellect that all these students bring and perspectives they have as they represent all three cohorts, rather eight cohorts, B, C, and D here at our school. So they'll share some of their perspectives with you tonight, and really appreciate the work they're doing here at our school. So I'll turn it over and let them introduce themselves to our SAC. Thanks for having us tonight.
Hello, my name is Avi Hassan. I'm a senior, and I'm the chairperson of the Student Advisory Committee. Thank you so much for having us here today. My fellow members will now introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Maxwell Evers, and I'm a senior.
Good evening, I'm David Lee, and I'm also a senior.
Hi, everyone. My name's Nikki Tharam, and I am a junior.
Hi, my name is Anushka Mupalatai, and I'm a junior.
Seniors. Shrewsbury seniors are receiving exciting news from colleges and even declaring commitments. On top of that, the SHS community is working hard towards a gratifying senior experience.
College applications. Seniors at SHS are just about done with the college application season. Add a pandemic, certainly made a wonder for the history books. Both in-person visits, and it's basically an impossibility, students relied on the internet to determine which schools were good fits for them and which weren't. Despite a recent switch from Aviance to SCOR, getting required documents to colleges has been a breeze, thanks in part to the dedicated counselors at SHS. Many competitive colleges have received a dramatic increase in applications due to the adoption of test optional policies, so seniors are holding their breath for admissions decisions in March and April.
Senior activities. Class of 2021 student government and class advisors have been working hard to provide a great senior experience in these hard COVID times. Recently, a senior raffle was introduced, dubbed the Senior Surprise Raffle. Four prizes are drawn each week, and the gifts have been arranged by senior parents working closely with the community. Gifts thus far have included gift cards, sweet treats, and merchandise from the Colonial Store. Winners pick up their baskets at Mr. LaZot's office. Class officers, advisors, and Mr. LaZot are working hard to plan senior events, but have not finalized anything to the strict public health guidelines. Thank you to everyone working hard to make our last year enjoyable. Student advocacy and well-being. Many changes have been present in student lives, and SHS understands the importance of maintaining strong mental health.
Well-being refrain. The COVID-19 pandemic has been a challenge for everyone to navigate through. We are proud that students participating in the Well-being Reframe, which is a branch of the Student Wellness and Ambassador Group, are acting as leaders of our school and advocating for changes that can be made to improve overall well-being. The goals of the Well-being Reframe are to normalize conversations around stress, trauma, and well-being, and also improve student access to well-being resources. There are five groups led, working to improve different parts of our community. The project called The Classroom Convoy aims to improve communication and relationships between students and teachers. The project Untipping the Balance aims to help students create a healthy balance between schoolwork and extracurriculars. The project Culture of Care aims to figure out how to have productive and meaningful conversations around difficult topics. The project One and Where aims to normalize conversations about mental health between teachers, students, and administrators. And lastly, the project Resource Repackaged aims to make resources such as counselors, school psychologists, more accessible to students. Currently, students are in the research phase of their projects, where they have sent out surveys and conducted interviews to gather data about the specific issues they want to tackle. The next step is to develop solutions with the data, and the last step is to implement them. We are excited to see the outcome of these projects.
Your mentoring. Throughout the Shrewsbury Public School system, there is a high degree of respect and importance placed on community service. Despite our students' extensive history of outreach, it's relatively uncommon to see service involving fellow students. With the mentor program between National Honor Society members and Sherwood students, we are lucky to have one such inter-school opportunity. With several mentors on the committee before you, we are proud to attest to the positive impacts of this program. The students we work with have been recommended for an extra connection by their parents and teachers, and have generally been extremely receptive to meeting up with SHS students every Tuesday or Thursday, depending on cohort. On the mentor end, we are all having a lot of fun putting positivity out into the world, and look forward to more in-depth discussions on Pokemon, music, school, and more.
Lunch changes. Since the start of the school year, our free lunch options have significantly improved due to requests from our incredibly diverse student body. From just cold lunches, hot lunches were also added in, and now we have many vegetarian options as well. These include, but are not limited to, Mexican salads, grilled cheese, and traditional cold breakfast offerings for lunch plans. There have been other advancements as well. Students now have the opportunity to choose their seats during lunch. They will arrive at lunch, take note of their seat number, and scan a QR code that leads them to a form. They fill out the form, and for contact tracing purposes, must stay in the chosen seat for the rest of the semester.
Office hours. In response to students' requests for more time to complete assignments on Blue Wednesday Live Zoom days, teachers have provided office hours during Period 3, where students have the option to zoom in for extra help. Many students appreciate this change because they can get a head start on their work, and also establish better connections with their teachers. Some students also take this time to relax away from their screens as a quick break before their next class. In addition to office hours, advisory periods are now also taking place at SHS with a couple of new changes. Advisory periods are now divided into two 25-minute segments, where the first is spent on building connections with our community through a program called Character Strong. The second segment focuses on academic intervention, where students get the opportunity to clear any doubts or ask questions about their classes. Overall, students are extremely grateful for this opportunity, which decreases their stress during long Zoom days by connecting with their teachers on a more personal level. Schedule changes. SHS has implemented a new schedule change for hybrid students by incorporating a mandatory 15-minute Zoom call for all classes during students' remote days. This would mean that each teacher would be required to manage both Cohort B and C at the same time, one being digitally and the other being in person. This adjustment has had overall mixed feelings from our student body and staff, but many are beginning to adapt to this new change. Teachers have used this short period of time in creative ways, some allowing students to get a head start on their remote work, others using it to do warm-up problems before starting their assignment. Various classes have also opted on joining both cohorts of a class together by zooming in at the same time during the first 15 minutes to work on an activity as a larger group. Although this modification was a bit difficult for students to get used to at first, many have slowly began to get into a routine, and have felt that their day is better structured.
COVID-19 response. It has been almost a year of this COVID-19 pandemic. Over this time, SHS has made meaningful adjustments to support students across a wide array of interests and activities. Athletics. The Shrewsbury High School sports teams have begun their Fall 2 season and just finished their winter season. The winter season included basketball, ice hockey, swim, all-pine skiing, and gymnastics. After initial tryouts, there was a short shutdown over the span of winter break, and one more to ensure safety and COVID-19 protection. Currently, all teams are always required to wear a mask, as well as bring extras, sanitize at substitutions, and practice for only one and a half hours. There have been adjustments made within each sport to allow for distance and safety. Meetings and games are broadcasted on the Colonial YouTube channel live. Athletes continue to work hard in and out of practice and feel fortunate that there's an opportunity to play.
Vaccinations and COVID-19 testing. In ways to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, Shrewsbury High School has offered and highly encourages students' participation in their new free pool testing system. This new system is eligible for SHS students who are attending school in person, and also to provide valuable information about the spread of COVID in our school environment. Families who sign off for this in the Parents Power School Parent Portal will be required to create an account on JCM Works, where each student is provided with a unique QR code that they bring to receive their testing kit and to return their kit as well. COVID testing kits are distributed during students' lunch periods, in which includes a shallow nose swabbing test, instructions, a testing tube, and a bag in which they place their swab. The returning process is even easier. Students simply have to scan their QR code upon arrival to school, and their test is sent over. SHS has had much success after their first run of this new system, and is reported to have zero positive cases of both students and staff who was tested the week of February 22nd to 26th. Students are hoping that with the inclusion of this new pool testing system, there can be a greater possibility of more school-run events, but continue to take the proper measures to keep our school as safe as possible during these trying times.
Cohort D. For both students have added especially unique experiences this year. In a survey conducted in January by home representatives within Cohort D, shines light in some challenges, as well as some student opinions. Some of the most significant results are as follows. On a scale of one to five, stress levels averaged a 3.5, and the main stressor was academics. Students also voiced approval at a question asking if they wanted coordinators to hold Zooms for help on essays and projects. Thanks to the survey, Cohort D coordinators have additional information to improve their remote learning experience. Home room representatives are currently working on exploring further ways to improve social communication, and plan to release further surveys to Cohort D students.
Science Fair. The annual science fair is always an exciting event where students interested in STEM get to innovate and explore their passions and curiosities. This year, the science fair looked different, where students presented their projects digitally, but the projects were impressive as always. Twelve projects, ranging from automating skin cancer diagnosis using machine learning technology, to testing if sound waves can enhance plant growth, were chosen by judges to represent SHS at the regional fair, which will be held virtually in early March.
Current events and student engagement. Outside of schoolwork, student minds are occupied by global news and local issues alike.
Anti-racism talk. 2020 was undoubtedly a year of reckoning on systemic racism and police brutality, and Shrewsbury Public Schools has made a commitment last year towards anti-racism. I recently spoke with English Department Head Ms. Tronblu and Social Sciences Department Head Ms. DiFrancesca about efforts both departments are taking to make their curriculums more inclusive. Ms. Tronblu stated that starting in 2019, the English Department has worked to increase the flexibility of the curriculum in order to allow teachers to incorporate more diverse books in their classes. Among the numerous purchases by the English Department include The Eight You Give, a novel about the aftermath of a police shooting, and There There, a novel about Native American history and identity. Ms. DiFrancesca stated that the Social Sciences Department has been working toward incorporating more diverse voices through resources such as the OER Modern History Project, the Zen Education Project, and the Facing History on Ourselves organization. The recently implemented Listen Wise service also encourages students to learn more and comprehend the recent current events. Additionally, on January 13th, Ibram X. Kendi, founding director of the Center of Anti-Racist Research at Boston University and one of Time Magazine's most influential people of 2020, delivered a talk on the difference between being not racist and being anti-racist. Hosted by the Shrewsbury Public Library Foundation, the talk, which 500 Shrewsbury residents attended, was structured as a lively conversation around his recent work, including his book Stamped from the Beginning. Professor Kendi argued that people who claimed they were not racist were emblematic of a widespread denial of systemic racism within America, and also elaborated how a person can be racist in one moment and anti-racist in mass. The one-hour event was insightful and informational, and having read Professor Kendi's work previously, I was excited to hear him speak. Student feelings about historical events. In the time between now and our last meeting, several prominent historical events have taken place. All across the country, tensions augmented as a result of the events surrounding the transfer of presidential power, notably concerning the Capitol Hill riot and the second impeachment of former President Donald Trump. Despite the diversity in our ethnicities, religions, incomes, and political views, it seemed that SHS students of all kinds were watching this transfer with bated breath. However, the Student Advisory Committee remains proud of Shrewsbury students for our ability to address and overcome these feelings of stress, whether with our senses of humor, our senses of community, or our grit. While it does seem that Americans are becoming more and more divided, this reality only makes students more appreciative of the unity that continues to prosper in our schools.
Black History Month presentations. Each year, during the month of February, our country celebrates Black History Month. At Shrewsbury High School, we place a high degree of importance on the achievements and contributions of Black heroes in America. This appreciation manifests itself in two main ways: the general appreciation of diversity at our school, and the Black History Assembly hosted by our wonderful Black History Committee. With writing and art contests, original music, and excellent speeches, the Black History Assembly is a yearly highlight at our school. This year's theme was No Better, Be Better, a reference to the famous African-American poet laureate Maya Angelou. While the assembly was held virtually as opposed to its usual live presentation, it was still met with universal acclaim that has become standard for the committee's yearly showcase, tapping into the extra layer of poignancy in regards to the Black Lives Matter movement. Besides the assembly, the Black History Committee would mention fun facts about important Black figures in American history, and on the day of the assembly, played notable songs by Black artists over the PA system. As per usual in March, SHS is now eagerly anticipating next year's celebration.
Thank you for your continuous support of the SAC, and will answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Lindsay?
Thank you. I want to start at the end of your agenda and let you know that Dr. Sawyer shared the recording of the Black History Assembly with all of us, and I found it so moving that I brought two of my children into my office to watch it with me on a weekend and say the attention to detail, to emotional impact, the ability to draw across numerous different narratives, it was really impressive work, and so I appreciate knowing more about how it was received by the student body. It certainly impacted me, but I'm glad to hear that it impacted the students as well. And I would also say that I applaud both the teachers' efforts that you mentioned to think about how we can be more of an anti-racist school and school system, and as they assess curriculum and things in their development, but also applaud all the students who continue to ask us to do better and be better, that we have work to do too. So I thank you for keeping that pressure on us, and for those amongst your colleagues who are doing the same, please let them know that their efforts are appreciated. Lastly, to a point raised a little earlier on, the various mental health supports that you're talking about, both within the school, both within the high school, but then even the efforts around mentorship for some of the kids at the middle school, I wonder from your perspective, how, there are a lot of good programs you mentioned, but how they're being received? Are they talked about positively? Are they, do you see people engaging with them? We can put out a lot of programs, that doesn't always mean they have the impact we're hoping for, so I'd love if you could just share any thoughts that you have about how those programs are actually going in practice.
In regards to the mentoring program, the mentoring program has been a big success, I would say. We have, these kids are often chosen for this program, these mentees. They're often chosen for this program because they usually would not be very receptive to Zoom classes or, you know, zooming in for school, and yet we see very consistent participation on these Zoom mentor opportunities every week. So we're definitely very excited and optimistic, and so far, it's been received very well by the students and the mentors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jason?
Ms. Heffernan took my question, so I'll just, I'll add a comment onto that. I really want to applaud the fact that each time the SAC comes before this body that well-being among students is a focal point of what you present. I think that this past year has been an extraordinarily difficult time for Americans of all ages, and I think for students, this has been an extraordinarily difficult time to cope with quite a bit while you're also learning and undergoing a lot of the normal stresses and pressures that go along with being high school students. So I just want to extend my compliments to this group, to you and your peers, for consistently keeping student mental health and well-being at the forefront of your agenda.
Thank you.
And I think I was thinking what Jason was talking, you know, we talk to our students and we listen to all the wonderful things that everybody's doing in the typical high school programs, but then we're layering in, you know, well-being, which we're talking about well-being, but in the past year, it's really added on a new meaning, talking about Cohort D and these things that we, it's a shame that we're having to do because of this pandemic. So I want to thank the shepherding that you're doing as the advisory council to the rest of the school. It's a lot of work on top of everything else that students are having to do this year, so thank you for everything you're doing, and Mr. Bizidlo, I mean, what you're doing with the rest of the school community there. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I want to thank our Student Advisory Committee for another excellent presentation. I also want to commend certainly lots of different highlights there, from the Science Fair to the Black History Month Assembly. I just mentioned, we're preparing our next report because it just happened, but the, you know, the telethon that we just did with Performing Arts, I mean, so many talented students who are sharing their talents just virtually instead of in person and adapting. I did have a question about the participation in the pooled testing surveillance testing program, and I'm wondering if you have some suggestions for ways for us to increase student participation? Hasn't been quite as high as we'd like to see at the high school yet. We just made an administrative decision just today that was communicated, that we are going to make participation in the pooled testing program mandatory for student athletes because of the nature of that program, and that will enable us to ensure that we're, as those students interact in the athletic fields and competitions, that we have that peace of mind, students are not positive but asymptomatic. But what are some suggestions that the SAC members have for ways to get more Shrewsbury High School students, and then ultimately, Oak Middle School, which has just started this week, and Sherwood starts the following week? How can we get more student participation?
I believe that if we were to highlight the progress that could be made if students continue to all participate in the program, it would really amplify the amount of students who do participate, because as of right now, I know many students know that it's happening and know that it's a test, but for them to see the bigger picture in what will happen if we all start to participate, I think none have a better grasp of what's really going on.
I agree. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. I like how everyone was emphasizing it at lunch. I think that was really helpful. I think maybe if we keep talking about it over the morning announcements every day, that would also be helpful.
I agree with, I agree with Avi, I agree with Anushka. Also, I really believe that it should be emphasized that in order for students to be able to enjoy sort of the in-person learning, like fully in-person learning that they were able to experience before, then it's vital that, like, the, despite of the testing plan works out very well, otherwise, the return to normal will be prolonged essentially if the participation rate isn't particularly high.
I also think we're presented with a really good opportunity in terms of how we collect the data. I feel like perhaps we know that we're
I feel like perhaps we know that we're taking tests at lunch, but we're collecting tests at the beginning of the day. Maybe we can introduce something where we collect tests as students go to lunch in a way, kind of reminding them, hey, maybe I should be participating in this. We also know that students, when they go to lunch, go through, you know, one hallway really. So it could be, perhaps that could be a way where we can kind of jog the memory of students to, you know, maybe I should get on to this program.
Well, I appreciate the suggestions, and I know Mr. Bizidlo does as well, and I know we'll continue to figure out ways that we can make that program work, but the greater the participation, and certainly student leaders like yourselves, hopefully the student council, class officers, other groups, certainly, you know, athletic team captains, the more we can promote this. And then I would also think that if our high school students are promoting it, I think our middle school students tend to listen to our high school students sometimes more than they listen to the adults in their lives. So I think that that's something as far as role models. So that is something that is another thing, perhaps, I know some students made a video to promote it at one point that might need to be updated at some point, but there could be a variety of ways, because the more students we have participating, the greater peace of mind families can have, the greater peace of mind our educators and school can have, and that's something I think, again, as we move into the spring, will be very helpful. So thanks for those thoughtful suggestions. And again, I appreciate the report on everything that's happening at the high school despite the challenging circumstances, and as Mr. Pellic said, I do appreciate the emphasis on student well-being as well. So thank you to all of you, thank you to Mr. Bizidlo for his continued leadership. We appreciate you presenting this evening.
Thank you again, and we will look forward to your next report later in the year.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda, we are going to have Dr. Sawyer's report update on the pandemic, as well as possibilities for reopening, for full in-person learning, as well as a potential vote to request a waiver from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding the timeline for return of grade five to full in-person learning.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Will take us through the data to get an update on where we are compared to where we were two weeks ago. As always, our focus is on the health and well-being of our students as our first priority, students, families, and staff. Our focus is to develop a safe school environment where all of our students and staff are able to have their well-being prioritized, and that enables high levels of learning despite the obstacles that we face this year, and that we continue to operate based on guidance from public health authorities, as well as the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that we're closely monitoring the latest information from medical experts and the evolving data regarding how the pandemic is affecting our state and our local community. We continue to see good news with regard to case counts. We have four to date this week. We're starting to see more of an average of about one a day. The cumulative number since the start of school is at 362. The number of possible in-school transmissions remains at seven. That hasn't changed since the very beginning of February. This week, we have a couple of cases in the remote program. There's been 31 total of students and staff in our remote program since the beginning of the school year. This is a bar chart that is much nicer to look at than did it a couple of months ago. We're really down to averaging about, you know, 10 or so cases a week over the last four weeks, and we're hopeful that those numbers hold steady, and then as things continue to evolve and warmer weather comes, and hopefully with the vaccine taking more hold and reducing exposure outside of school, which is typically obviously where that, we're getting cases from, that things will continue to get better. We know obviously there's cautionary messages being sent about variants and whatnot, and we can't predict exactly what things are going to look like, but it certainly has been a positive trend over the last month plus. This is also another positive statistic. The Massachusetts seven-day positivity rate for the entire state is down to 1.62% according to this Johns Hopkins University Coronavirus Resource Center report. That's been reduced since the last report a couple of weeks ago, and as you can see, Massachusetts is about the fifth lowest positivity rate in the nation. So we continue to be in a strong position there as a state. This is also a nice trend where we see the positivity rate for Shrewsbury down to 2.3%. That was of last Thursday's weekly public health report with statistics from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So hopefully that trend will continue to move downward back to the levels we were seeing back in the fall, which were very, very low. As far as the split between students and staff, the percentage has remained the same, about 83% of our cases, this is among all students and staff, whether hybrid or remote, and 17% of being from staff members. As far as by school, you can see that, of course, the high school is our largest school by far, also has the largest number of cases. You'll see another display that shows it's a little higher in those grades as well, but they can, you can just see the numbers there distributed across our elementary and middle schools and high school, and then a few members who work at the district level. By grade, you know, it doesn't spread out quite as dramatically, and you can see that although the high school grades are higher, middle school, some middle school grades are just behind that, and pretty similar among grades, elementary grades a little bit lower than grade three than the others, but again, that's stayed pretty consistent over time. Although I would say in recent weeks, we're seeing more of a spread. We're not seeing a concentration at one particular school. This again is a nice trend line where we see the number of cases per week. This is total coming down over time, big bump up after Thanksgiving, again, after the December holiday break, moved down and then up a little bit for a bit, then back down, and again, hopefully we'll continue to see those numbers drop. In terms of the public health report, at the last two-week period they reported on was the 14th of February through the 27th of February, we're down to about 6.42 cases per day for the whole community. There were 90 cases over those two weeks, that there were averaging 16.3 per 100,000, which of course is larger than the community of Shrewsbury, but that's to equal out, to be able to compare community to community. Positivity rate again at 2.3%, that places us in the yellow zone. In order to get into the green zone, we'll have to get below that average of 10 cases per 100,000, which hopefully the trend line continues to go in that direction. This again is just an example of a study that was done some time ago that indicates what are the most effective strategies to reduce the chance of in-school transmission. These are all strategies that we've been following throughout the school year. And to suspect in-school transmission, again, we have seven cases that stayed that way over the last month. That's only about 1.9% of all of our positive cases in the hybrid model. In other words, 98.1% of our cases have come from outside sources and not are suspected of being transmitted in school. I also want to share, having shared this prior, I think we can do this without violating anyone's confidentiality, of those seven cases, one of them is a suspected transmission between a student and a staff member. Couple were staff-to-staff member suspected transmissions, a couple were student-to-student suspected transmissions, and at least one was a staff-to-student suspected transmission. So certainly understanding, rightfully so, the concern that staff have about their level of risk, but over two-thirds of a school year where, you know, where we've had, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you would quantify the numbers of thousands of interactions that we've had between staff and students, and of the, you know, almost 400 cases we've seen total, or 360 some odd, or whatever it is in school, we've seen only one suspected case of in-school transmission from a student to a staff member. As I mentioned a little bit with the Student Advisory Committee, we have been doing pooled surveillance testing. We began with our staff on February 3rd. We had at high school students a couple of weeks ago, the week we had the February school vacation, we did not test. So there's been four weeks of staff testing, that's been a total of about 1,950 staff tests. We've had four positives of asymptomatic people. So again, about 99.8% of those surveillance tests were negative, which should give a very high degree of confidence that we are not seeing people coming into the building. And obviously, a concern before we had the pooled testing was maybe lots of people were walking around without symptoms, but were actually positive and potentially spreading it, but that does not seem to be the case among our staff, and that's staff across our entire district who volunteer to be tested. We've had two full weeks of high school student testing. We've had about 700 tests total, and we've had zero positives among our high school students. And again, we'd like to see a higher percentage of our students being tested. We're working towards that, but again, it's still a good news story. That's a sizable sample of our high school population of students who are coming in person, and to have 100% negative tests is good news. We're beginning testing of Oak students this week, that started this week. We'll get those results for the students who submitted their tests yesterday in the next couple of days, and then the students who come on Thursdays and Fridays will submit their tests on Friday, and we'll get those results typically by Monday. So again, hopefully for similar results there. We'll roll it out to Sherwood next week, and then we'll start to roll it out to our elementary grades after that. Again, we think this brings a lot of peace of mind, not only to the school environment, but we really want to promote it for families too. I know certainly as a parent of a high school student and an Oak student, looking forward to having that weekly confirmation that, along myself as a staff member, that no one in the home is carrying the virus, and that if it were a positive, we're able to catch it faster than if they had been, you know, before someone becomes symptomatic, or sometimes we know people don't even become symptomatic. So again, good news story, and I really appreciate the work of Karen Isaacson, who's our Director of Extended Learning, who's essentially been functioning as our COVID Operations Chief, working closely with Mr. Collins, who has been responsible for all the logistics having to do with this testing, and as you heard from the high school students, it's been very smooth with the use of QR codes and barcodes on the test samples, and it's really been a very, very smooth process. Now for sort of the big news of the week in terms of our planning for return to full in-person school. This past Friday, Jeff Riley, the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Commonwealth, was empowered by the State Board of Education to stop allowing hybrid learning models to count towards the state mandated requirement of 100, typically, typically year, 180 days of school, this year 170, in the number of hours that are required for elementary and middle and high schools. This was done with an emphasis on feeling that students needed to return for their well-being, especially their mental health and well-being, and that it would be a superior, which I think most people recognize, that it's preferable to have in-person instruction where we can, and that is a decision that was made by the department or by the State Board of Ed to empower the commissioner in that direction. The commissioner did confirm yesterday that using this new ability that he's been granted is that he is mandating all elementary grades to return to full in-person school by April 5th, and all middle school grades by April 28th, which is the, April 5th is a Monday, it's the day after Easter, and then April 28th is the Wednesday after the April school vacation week, which begins with Monday Patriots' Day, and then the following week, Wednesday, I'm not quite sure why Wednesday, but that was the date that was set as the must-return date for middle schools. And I'll speak a little bit more to that in a minute in terms of grade five. A high school return date has not been set. The commissioner did indicate that he would make an announcement in April as to what a high school return date would need to be, that there would be at least two weeks' notice before any, when he makes an announcement. Obviously, he's asking districts to plan for whenever they can, and emphasizing wanting schools to come back sooner if they can. There's recognition, I think, by the commissioner and the Department of Education that high schools are particularly complex to bring back, just because of the scheduling aspect and more mixing of students, and certainly in high schools like Shrewsbury High School with very high student populations that are well beyond what the school was designed for complicates issues as well to a degree. And we have some of those same issues in our elementary and middle schools as well, and I'll speak to that in a moment as well. So we are working, as we have been doing planning, and now we're, you know, obviously we're honed in on these dates as must-return dates, and I would expect that just given the level of planning that needs to happen, we will not do it any sooner than that either for either of those levels. I don't see that in the cards right now, but that is coming up very soon. And of course, we want to make sure, and I think the commissioner emphasized this in both the state board meeting on Friday, as well as on a call with superintendents that was held earlier today, the reason for this phased-in approach is to be able to do it well, rather than sort of rip the Band-Aid off and have everyone come back all at once. And I think it goes to, you know, speaking about the stability that has been engendered by the program that we've had for a long time in place now. I was interested to see, and we want to thank everyone who responded to the surveys that we put out, to families and to staff, but there was a lot of sentiment in the family survey and comments about appreciating the hybrid model, appreciating the stability it's brought, regardless of what one thinks about the potential risk of their child about coming back with less than six-foot distancing, which is really some of the key elements of this, or one of the key elements, is really about not wanting to upset the apple cart and create more change during a year that's been already difficult for students and families to manage. At the same time, certainly families who would like to see kids back in school full time, both for their learning, as well as for the parents' ability to work more effectively and not have childcare issues at home, especially for our youngest students. So there's a whole variety of issues and perspectives that people have. But these are, this is important news, and this is what we are working towards, so we will meet these mandates, because that's something that will be required of us, of course, and we want to do it in a way that is as safe as possible, first and foremost, and that minimizes the educational disruption to students with this kind of change happening during the last third of the school year. I mentioned about the survey, families and staff. We gave families in Cohort D, the all-remote cohort, until this past Monday to make a decision about when we do come back full in-person for their, that particular student's grade level. Would they keep their student in remote learning for the remainder of the year, which is allowable under the commissioner's, the new guidance or new mandate from the state? Families still have that choice, or would they have their student come back to all in-person learning at that time? And as you can see, a very, very significant majority are going to keep their students in all-remote learning, and 16% to 84% of them, so about 1,500 students of the 1,800 who are in Cohort D, which is substantially larger than a lot of other districts. You know, obviously, district to district, different families make different decisions for different reasons, but we're, you know, we're definitely a larger Massachusetts district generally, and certainly for a suburban district, and that is something of the 6,000 or so students, that's a pretty good chunk of students, 1,800, who have been in the all-remote cohort all year long, and most of them will stay in that. Now bringing 294 students back, those are spread across different grade levels, but it still will have an impact on what we need, are able to do and how we can do it. Just a few pieces of data from the surveys we did put out. This is a bar graph that shows from our cohort B and C families. So these are families who are in the hybrid model, whose students attend school two days a week in person. How do they feel about their students' level of risk to return to school with three feet of distancing instead of six feet of distancing? In a future communication, I'll share some of the medical research that's being presented at the state level and scientific or medical journals. There's been a recent study that was just released that was sent to us today. I haven't had really time to look at it yet, but in terms of the highlights indicates was specific to Massachusetts schools not having any higher rates of cases in school, whether it was a three-foot distance or a six-foot distance, essentially saying that in-school transmission is very, very rare regardless of which of those distances are used, as long as masking is the key that's in place with that happening. So that is, you can see here that the confidence, as you might expect, because the vast majority of these, of these families will have their students return with three feet, they're feeling pretty confident that the risk level to their child is not substantial, but there's still some families who, you know, aren't feeling particularly confident. You know, we have a very small number of families who want to move to all-remote, which we're giving that option for now, you know, if they're in the hybrid right now, but they're really not comfortable with all the kids coming back, and so, but most of them will stay in because you can see that level of confidence. If you filter for just Cohort D families, families who are already chose to be all-remote, not surprisingly, you can see their confidence level isn't particularly high. They're more worried about the transmission of the virus, which is why 85% of them are deciding to stay in that all-remote for the remainder of this year. For those watching, just to be clear, the commissioner has said it on a couple of occasions now, the expectation for next fall, obviously, this presumes that things are going to continue to improve as far as the virus, that would be, may not be back totally to normal, but that the option for families to opt into a remote learning program would only be available if a student has a medical condition that would preclude them because of the level of risk from being in-person. So the Cohort D approach is not something we're expecting is going to be utilized next school year, and that's something as parents are thinking about planning, and hopefully that's for all good reasons, because hopefully by that time, the virus is very, very scarce. But we will obviously see how that evolves. As far as our staff, and I think I want to just take a moment to again thank our staff who have been doing extraordinary work throughout the year under very trying circumstances. I think that regardless of what one might think about, you know, whether school should be back fully in-person, or you should be all-remote, or something in-between. be back fully in-person, or you should be all-remote, or something in between, whatever the circumstances, our staff, our staff who are working with our all-remote students, our staff who are working with our hybrid program students, they are doing exceptionally good work. They're connecting with students, they're trying to focus on the most important academic elements of helping them develop intellectually. And I think that, again, there's a lot of heartening comments in the survey from families about being very highly satisfied with the quality of what they've been receiving this year. And that's kudos to our staff for that, our educators and our support staff. In terms of their own concerns, you can see that, you know, it's a little bit split. Some lack of confidence of making, I think a lot of staff are saying, you know, they really appreciate there has not been in-school spread, but they're wondering, how much does that six-foot distance mean for that? And we have some conflicting information, the CDC, although the CDC says for a community like ours with low levels of transmission, that it's more important to bring all students back in-person than it is to, at under six feet, than to maintain the six feet. But they emphasize you should keep six feet if you can. And then it says if you can't do six feet, you should really focus on cohorting kids and potting them. And that's not going to be as possible in some of our schools when we come back in April. So I can understand sort of some of that conflicting expert advice that we're seeing from some of the different medical community groups. Whereas there's a group of doctors in Massachusetts who have emphatically indicated, based on some of this other research, that three feet should be equally as safe as six feet. So, you know, that's something that certainly weighs on the minds of staff. In terms of some of the other concerns staff have, and again, this goes to stability, if the rules for quarantining, the rules for who a close contact is, haven't changed. And if they do change, we'll make those adjustments. But we're expecting that when all of our elementary students come back in April, that if a student happens to come to school and they've been positive and we contact trace, there are going to be multiple students in that classroom who are going to be excluded and have to quarantine because there will have been within six feet of that student for more than 15 minutes because the seats will only be three feet apart. And teachers are rightfully concerned about the kind of disruption if a large number of students in class have to be out for two weeks, others remaining in class. You know, how do you, how do you manage that? Do you do some live streaming? How do you, what do you provide for asynchronous work to help those kids stay on track? How does that, what does that mean for the planning that teacher has, the types of lessons? Because certainly, teachers want to take advantage of having kids in person, whether those are hands-on mathematics lessons or science lessons or those kinds of things. Those are obviously hard to replicate for the kids who might be at home if they're quarantining. So that level of disruption is something that we've avoided because of the six-foot distancing. That may come back into play. If the case counts stay really low, it shouldn't be a big issue because it shouldn't be happening very frequently. But that is something that's on teachers' minds as we've had conversations with their representatives over the last couple of weeks. In terms of those logistical challenges, the three-foot distancing is a significant challenge. And the guidance and the expectation from the state is that six-foot distancing remains where the mask can't be worn for lunches, mask breaks, snack. And so now we have a situation where, you know, kids can very easily have a snack in their classroom because they're already distanced six feet. Now, if they're distanced less than six feet, you can't do it in the classroom with all the kids there at the same time. So how do you make, how do you manage that? These are some of the logistics that our principals and their teams are working on as we try to figure out this return-to-school piece, you know, down to, you know, peeling back layer after layer of what we have to do to maintain these various safety measures. We are going to need to utilize desks at the elementary level to, you know, some of the trapezoid tables and things like that just don't really work well to keep kids apart, as much as even at three feet. And so we have used COVID grant funds to purchase approximately 1,000 desks that will enable that full return to happen on April 5th. And I commend Mr. Collins and his team for the logistical work that they've been doing to make this, to make this happen. But some of the things that happened as a result of this, you know, we're finalizing plans for moving companies to be able to, you know, take out some of the furniture that's in classrooms right now. Because right now, you can imagine an elementary classroom that has desks spread across the class with, that are six feet apart, and they still might have a couple of tables that kids can use from time to time or other ancillary furniture around the edges. We're not going to have room for that ancillary furniture anymore. We're just going to need to fill the space with desks that are three feet apart. So we need someone to come in and take furniture out. And then we need to take delivery and set up the additional desks to add those bins so we can have essentially twice the kids in person at the same time. In order to do this appropriately and safely, I want to give the community a heads-up, and I'll communicate this more, especially once we firm this up in the next couple of days. We're expecting that on Thursday, March 25th and Friday, March 26th, at the elementary schools, that we would need to have an all-remote, two all-remote learning days to enable that furniture removal and desk delivery to happen. And we are not, you know, as much as, I mean, we certainly ask, but delivery at night or on the weekends is not something these companies are offering right now. And that's something, so we need to work with the vendors that we have and work through that. So that is part of the shift. In order to make this happen, is going to take some things that are going to cause some shifts and changes in the schedule leading up to the full return. I want to take a moment to share what I thought was a very important paragraph in the guidance we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education yesterday, which talks about these challenges. This was there bold from the DESI guidance, that this is going to be, you know, a substantial shift, and that families should expect that we are going to need as school districts to make challenging trade-offs. So some of those are things like, well, I might have to have a couple of remote days in order to get the furniture squared away. But more importantly, students who are in the hybrid model now, in order for us to make it work as far as the number of students who we can fit in a classroom with three-foot distancing, there are some classes that when all the kids come back, cohorts A, B, and C, and maybe a couple of kids coming back out of cohort D, we don't have enough space in some classrooms and some grade levels that we'll be able to fit all the kids with that three-foot distancing, which would mean that we would have to have some students move to a new class. It is far from optimal for students to get a new teacher in April for the April, May, and June of a school year. But obviously, we'll try to avoid that where we can, but that is an example of one of the trade-offs we are going to have to make, just base purely on the number of students we have per class in Shrewsbury, and what it is that we need to do for distancing and how big certain classrooms are in certain schools. So that's something that families need to have an understanding, and obviously, we will minimize it, but there will be some difficult conversations coming up with families with that regard. It also may choose, you know, may change some of the teachers, a student who is coming out of the remote learning program. Obviously, those families know they're going to be changing or hoping or assuming to some degree that their teacher will change. We don't have students moving out of remote classrooms that an entire remote classroom would just move lock, stock, and barrel into in-person learning and keep the same intact class. So they'll enter into probably some existing in-person learning classes. There may be some teachers, though, who are coming back out of remote, but taking kids from different remote classes who are coming together in one classroom, for example, or one middle school team. So that's something that is important, and therefore, on the remote side of things, there may be cases where we have to, where there's a remote section of students that may be dissolved and those students redistributed across other teachers who are remaining with remote classes. So there's going to be some teacher changes potentially and likely there will have to be among the remote cohort D students as well in grades K through A. That's what this slide actually illustrates, what I was just talking about. And then again, it's particularly challenging in grade five due to a high class size that we have there. And, you know, we can't fit 27, 28 desks, even in a new school like Sherwood, with three-foot distancing. So our high class sizes that we already have are going to challenge us when it comes to this piece. So for that reason, when we're done with this update, I am asking the school committee to vote to submit a waiver to the Department of Education to allow fifth grade to be treated as a middle school grade. This is something the Commissioner was very explicit in, in his conversation with superintendents, and that is very explicit in the written guidance that they put out, which I sent a link to in the email I sent today to families to remind them of this meeting, to the community. And that it makes, it doesn't make a lot of sense for districts where fifth grade is a middle school grade and not an elementary grade, which is true in Shrewsbury and many other districts, to try to have fifth grade as a standalone grade come back on one timetable and the other middle school grades coming back on another timetable. So I'm asking the school committee this evening to empower us to submit a waiver that would treat fifth grade along, as the same as sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which is typical for Shrewsbury anyways. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins, who will talk a little bit about some changes in the school bus transportation regulations, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So just in terms of carrying on that theme of change, there are some changes coming with respect to school bus transportation. The current model right now in terms of transporting students who opted for transportation in cohorts A, B, and C, primarily, in every instance, we've been able to spread those children out so that there was one child per bench on a yellow school bus. And that's what will change when we now bring everybody back together and have cohorts A, B, and C riding together five days a week with the elementary schools as of April 5th and middle schools as of April 26th. So these changes are made again with the guidance in direction of the Mass Department of Education, and they published new guidance on February 11th. So these changes are already in place and have been for several weeks. And certainly, these changes again will increase our carrying capacity, if you will, for each of the buses and allow us to return to school without having to add any additional buses to the fleet, which of course, we couldn't obtain on such short notice. And secondly, there still remains a bus driver shortage. So it's not as if we would have an option, even if we wanted to, or even if we had the financial resources to do so, those wouldn't be options. So these changes are again from the Department of Education, and they're based upon science that was published by the Harvard Chan School of Public Health. We had a couple of questions from parents about, you know, why the district was changing from just one child per seat to maybe more than one. And again, this is from the Department of Education and supported by science. And this next slide basically is a chart done of scientific experiments. Basically, on the left-hand side, there's two charts here. One, this chart in the lines are demonstration of the carbon dioxide buildup on a yellow school bus under two different separate conditions. And carbon dioxide, of course, is what we exhale, and it's used as a proxy for, of course, ventilation and making sure that we have good air circulation both in our classrooms and other occupied spaces. So the chart on the left basically is a static school bus with a fan running, bringing in fresh air. And you can see that the fan over time drops the CO2 level. And it's a static bus. It's a bus that's not in motion. On the right-hand side is a yellow school bus in motion with the windows cracked and the fan running as well, bringing in fresh air. And you can see the dramatic drop once that school bus starts to move with those windows cracked, that you get significant air changes as the bus is moving and providing that ventilation. That's really the science behind why this is safe and have, it's safe to have children sit aside one another for that length of that bus ride. Next slide. So what is the same in terms of going forward is that all the students and the driver must still be wearing a mask at all times. The policy has been to keep the windows cracked, and that will continue to be so going forward as well. Just crack fewer windows during inclement weather. And students will still have assigned seats to and from school. Next. What's new is that basically, the capacity limitations have been lifted completely for all elementary school grade levels K through four, regardless of COVID conditions. At the middle school level, the ridership has basically been lifted. And unless you are a community with high prevalence, then you are restricted to up to two children per bench seat. And in most cases, we don't, do not have children at middle and high school riding three per bench anyway. So effectively for us, the ridership of number of students per bus and per bench has been effectively lifted. This will mean that in some instances, we will be having two children in a bench. I do want to make mention that because of those changing conditions, Karen Isaacson, who was mentioned earlier and has been a great assistance, also filling in as a temporary transportation coordinator, communicated with all of our parents who had opted for bus ridership and let them know that these, the situation was going to change once we have all elementary students returning and providing the updated information about the potential for multiple seats per bench, and then also providing an opportunity for parents to opt out. So that if they felt like it was too risky, please let us know so that we can plan for who will be riding when all elementary children are returning to school in full. The other piece is, again, that this change has been supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Again, these multiple air changes from Chan School of Public Health, science experiments, and that the guidance is differentiated between elementary and middle school students. Next, we certainly will have, as I mentioned, some students riding two per bench. We'll certainly avoid that when we can, but those situations could occur. And for those parents who have children in cohort D and have been remote all year up to this point, and we know some of them are coming back, that once we get those rosters finalized of who is coming back, we'll be communicating with them as well in a targeted way to see if they're seeking bus service. And let's see, the other, the last piece would be that certainly, when you're going from, you know, a hybrid model and picking up half the children, you know, on a Monday, and then when we flip to all children returning on April 5th, you've got potentially twice the amount of kids riding now. And so parents should expect, and this is why we're communicating this, is that it's going to take longer, a little bit longer, to load all those children, and there will be some more stops so that on a Monday, if there was a child at a bus stop, but he was in a different cohort, cohort C, well, now we're going to have to make that stop on Monday. So there will, each day, there will be more stops, more children riding, and that is for this first week of service, certainly going to slow things down. So just as an example, hypothetical example, if your child was being picked up at, on elementary run at 8:15, and it was really consistent for 8:15, you might expect that that bus is going to be a few minutes later than 8:15. And then after that first week of service, it will set into a new pattern. So we want parents to have that expectation. And then finally, certainly with more children returning to school as well, that we fully expect that the parent drop-off and pickup lines are going to be much longer and wait times longer as well. So parents should not be waiting to the last minute to drop off their children and allow more time in the morning to do so, and also understand that the lines in the afternoon will be longer as well. So that is the transportation update with respect to the reopening. And turn it back to Dr. Sawyer.
So to wrap up again, you know, we know that there are better times ahead. We're hopeful as spring comes. We have to continue to look at the reality of our situation. Obviously, we continue to strive to provide the best educational programming possible to our students under the circumstances. Our principals, their assistant principals, our staff across the board are working really hard to try to figure out what's the best way to ensure that this return to full in-person school is done well, and that minimizes the impact on our students' academic progress when there is a bit of a shift of gears here, and then hopefully utilize the in-person time for the remainder of the year, obviously, to help improve their ability to learn during their current school year. And at the same time, you know, we are optimistic that it will help with some of the very significant mental health and wellness, mental well-being challenges that we know students are experiencing. At the same time, we need to do it safely. We need to follow the guidance. The guidance is not, these are not easy nuts to crack necessarily in some cases because, you know, every school district has unique circumstances. How big's your cafeteria? Patton School is going to have a very big tent that we're going to pay a decent amount of money. of money for out of our COVID grant funding that we've held on to because we knew we'd have to have some expenditures. Because they don't have two spaces they can put kids for lunch, like the other elementary schools can use the gym and the cafeteria. There's only one cafeteria and space that's also doubles of the gym at Patton. So we'll probably be utilizing tents again where we can at other sites. But the logistics here, and I've talked to lots of different superintendents, and there are some common challenges around lunch with six-foot distancing, snack in classrooms with six, with less than six-foot distancing, how we can logistically make the furniture work, all these other elements. And Massachusetts districts are working really hard to make it work. Some are able to crack the nut a little bit easier because they have lower enrollment and bigger and more space. We have overcrowded elementary schools as well. We're building a new school. We have middle schools that unfortunately, even when we maximize all the space, we don't have class sizes that are as good as some other local districts. The high school is a whole other kettle of fish, which is why the state's not mandating that yet. We are looking at the possibilities though, because we want kids in the school as much as we can, but we need to do it safely. And of course, we need to do it in a way that does not create a lot of unintended consequences for the continuity of their studies right now. So we'll do the best we absolutely can to make this work, and we'd be happy to take any questions that the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. And before I turn it over to my colleagues, I think, you know, looking at the magnitude of the logistical challenges, we have to talk about expectations for parents and teachers. And there's so much happening in such a short amount of time. You know, I think about the planning over the summer, which seemed like a short amount of time. I mean, this is a lot happening very quickly, and I, we have to ask for understanding and patience from everybody involved, and this is going to be a lot all at once. And especially, you know, asking for the waiver for the fifth grade. I'm sure there's a lot of families who are like, I really want my children to get back into school, but we need to take that time and have that patience to do things, like Dr. Sawyer said, to do things right. So I just ask for patience again, because the expectations are going to be high, but we need to do things right as we move forward. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues again. Anyone questions, comments? Lindsay.
I always have something to say. I'm sorry. The, I think, a couple of things. There's a lot in there. I've covered a lot, a lot, a lot of material. I want to reinforce actually the conversation we were having with our, with the high school students, but the COVID testing, my family will be participating in that this week for the first time. We're excited about that, and I'm optimistic that as we continue to push that down through the grade levels, that hopefully we will see a higher uptake rate, that will, that will be another layer of protection here. I remember in the summertime, we looked at that Swiss cheese model of, you know, keeping spread down and certainly pool testing at the time seemed something like something we couldn't possibly get to. And now we have it, and now we just got to get people, you know, enrolled and using it. And there's some trickiness as a parent who tried to figure out how to enroll in Power School and then the other website and then the QR code and it, but I would encourage parents to double down on that and to enroll themselves. And I wanted to take a moment to really thank the teachers who have been going above and beyond to make, in particular for my family, the hybrid program work. And a quick story, my second grader participated today in the biography program. It's a traditional second grade, Harriet Tubman was her, was her person. And when I think about the work that goes into trying to figure out how to do a project such as that in a remote environment, because there was a lot, a lot of work done in the, in the home setting there, she was just as enthusiastic about that project. And she showed our poster last night at the dinner table, and we've done a great, great job, I think, as a district, as the teachers, you know, are showing us every day of really engaging kids. And yet, when I said to her, and she was nervous this morning, the whole nine yards, right, but, and, you know, presenting on Zoom, but when I talked to her about going back to school, she was jumping up and down with enthusiasm, right? And so we know our, our kids want to get back to school. I appreciate some of the trepidation we saw in the survey results from staff, but by and large, I know a lot of our staff want to, want to get back there too. The, as much as we can, given the incredibly short timeframes that we have, I completely agree with you, Sandy, that those, those couple of dates are really important and nailing down the 25th and the 26th as potential home, home days or all, all remote days at the elementary level. And I guess I just wonder, as we look ahead to Sherwood and Oak, which is only just a few weeks thereafter, does that present the same kind of furniture challenges? And would we likely need to do something in that, in that space as well? Or is it, does it's a little different just based on the, I don't know how much pod furniture you have at the middle school level and the furniture's, you know, Sherwood's a little newer building, so furniture was bought more recently, that, but, or do you expect we might have to see that again at that, at that level for families?
Right. So at this point, we're not planning for that. You know, one of the differences would be that we do have the April break between, before the Sherwood and Oak students have to come back. So that gives us a window of opportunity to deal with some of those issues. So as of right now, there's no plan to do that for middle schools, but we haven't, we haven't completed all the planning yet either, so. But, you know, obviously trying to avoid that at all costs. And, you know, if there were another way to achieve this at the elementary, we would. But as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, we have right now classrooms actively using some of these furnishings in their classroom, so we can't pull them out. And so we really need time to do that, that's non-school time. Given the scale of this whole thing, it's just not a one-night kind of thing. It's, it's multiple days, and the vendor has agreed to work over the weekend on Saturday and Sunday as needed as well. That is part of the plan. And so, but it's just, we, we're going to need that time for the elementary level, and we're hoping to avoid it for middle school, and we haven't really even begun to even talk about high school.
I appreciate high school is a whole other ball, kettle of fish, I would say. But I would just thank the administrative staff, thank the flexibility of our teachers, and continually thank our parents. And we know that the elementary program and the hybrid model has some additional stressors for families and needs for families. So I hope that many are relieved and eager, but the next couple of weeks and our communications are obviously really important and can be hard to cut through all the noise of what is important. And this one is important and is a big change. So I, I hope that parents are listening, and I hope we can rely on our partners at PTOs and the like to also help us get the word out about a pretty significant and rapidly approaching change. But I'm very supportive of the, of the efforts on behalf of everyone here tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Jason?
Let me start by thanking our district leadership team and our staff at all levels for their handling of this relatively recent news. I think that our district's team has handled this extraordinarily well, given the enormity of all of the pressures facing Shippensburg Public Schools and every K through 12 school district across the state right now, just when we reached a point of what I would call something resembling stability in the operations of K through 12 day-to-day and lord knows in finances and other matters, there's been a great deal of instability in recent weeks and months. But right when we hit a point of stability in operations, to have this level of complexity introduced is a challenge, to say the least. So I want to thank our team for the way they've handled this. I find myself extremely disappointed in the Commonwealth. And I think the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education deserves an extraordinary amount of criticism for the way that, in my opinion, they have grossly mishandled this situation in the past few weeks. The administration has been criticized for moving in this fashion to detract politically from other problems, and I try not to be cynical, but I'm sorry to say, I see some validity to that approach, exemplified by the fact that just yesterday, as I understand it, middle school grades were added to this with very little notice to district leadership. And exemplified by the fact that, while I understand logically the reason behind it, you know, there are going to be families who are still allowed to keep their kids fully remote, and I'm glad that they will have that choice, but I guess it's not the case that everyone needs to go back as far as the state is concerned. It's just that districts can't make that choice anymore. We're not making a decision to send all of our students back. We're just deciding who gets to decide and who doesn't. And I think that that was extraordinarily disrespectful to districts, the way that this has been handled in the past few weeks. And let me be clear, I express this criticism while being somebody who is extraordinarily supportive of the idea of students going back to classrooms. I've always been very vocal in my opinion that there is a lot lost when kids are not in classrooms. We know that it can be done in a safe manner. I do not oppose the notion of students going back. I am supportive of the idea of students going back, and I do like that at the end of the day, we're going to have more students back in our classrooms than where this started. I just think the way that the Commonwealth has handled this has been disgraceful, to say the least. And I applaud our district's team for handling it with grace and aplomb, given all of the challenges they have on their plate.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
A lot of ground was covered in this report, and I really appreciate Dr. Sawyer and everybody here in the room, the leadership team, for all the thought put into the planning around some of the announcements that were made over the last week. Also think there's some really good news stories here with regards to the parent feedback on our existing hybrid model and certainly the pool testing at the high school. The logistical planning is definitely making my head spin over the next three weeks, as I'm sure it is Mr. Collins in particular. And I do appreciate the transparency that Dr. Sawyer provided with regards to the classroom changes that are going to be needed to support this move back to the classrooms. Again, we go back to the beginning of our school year with the slogan, flexibility, patience, and grace. I think over the next month or two, I think we're going to need a lot of that, certainly with students and parents, staff and educators. But I think we're all looking out for everybody's best interests and well-being. With regards to the COVID grant funds that you referenced, you certainly, I'm pretty sure, there's carryover from last year that are covering the expenses that you referenced for the new desks and the moving company. Is that, is that part of what you're using it for?
Yeah, these are, these are, these are dollars that have already been allocated to the school district and, you know, in terms of, you know, we know some, some of those pots of money we have this year to spend, some could even go into the following school year. We know we can expect from the law that passed the House and of Representatives today in Washington DC, additional funding that's going to be coming. So we're obviously feeling more comfortable spending some of the dollars that we have now for legitimate and important purposes related to getting kids back to school. That's, that's a lot of what they're, you know, what they're need to be used for. So that's, thankfully, dollars that are not part of our operating budget, therefore, it's not detracting from something else that we're doing with our educational program. But, you know, it remains to be seen, and we can talk more about this in the budget conversation later, but it remains to be seen what this next round of stimulus will actually do directly for school districts as well as for municipalities. But, you know, those are dollars that we're carrying that have been already allocated to us.
Right. And you mentioned, I think Mr. Collins mentioned, or maybe it was you, Dr. Sawyer, about the, the, the tent that's going to be outfitted for Patton. Are there any other schools, like elementary or middle, that have those types of needs that you could see so far?
Right now, we think that the, in terms of the, you know, the tenting is really around providing additional seating capacity for food service. And, you know, right now, we believe that the elementary schools have sufficient seating other than Patton School. And, you know, we've got to go through a little bit more of a process with Oak and certainly the high school. That's not really been determined what the final needs will be there, but I think we'll have sufficient capacity at Sherwood Middle School to, you know, contain those students in both the gymnasium and cafeteria space right now.
Got you. Okay. And then just one final question on, on pool testing. I know my daughter's been participating at the high school for the last couple of weeks. Seems to be a pretty easy process. He said he had 700 tests in the last two weeks from Shippensburg High School students. Do we know how many opted in, in Power School, like with the waiver roughly?
Trying to remember the high school numbers. I know it was, the last time that I checked, it was over 500, probably maybe approaching 600. So certainly, we have room to improve there, and I think that the policy change, especially with requiring high school athletes as a compulsory item to test to participate, will help enormously. So that's, that's off my memory, is we were probably in the five, upper 500, 600 range from when I last checked for high school student participation rate.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, I do like the suggestion that was made by one of the students on the Student Advisory Committee about the advocacy and, you know, communication amongst the other students about the value of testing. I think that's a good approach. It sounds like it's already started in some of the classes and the lunches, so thank you so much.
I have a question, Mr. Collins, on the desks. Is there any concern about those not being delivered on time? With furniture, it seems to be furniture seems to be something that's always, Amy's going, no, they're going to be in.
Yeah. So I guess I want to say two things, and I don't want to forget to say both, both things. Number one is, you know, we've been working on this desk issue for a couple of weeks, and there is a scarcity of desks because, as you can imagine, you know, every school district in the nation is coming back and trying to solve these space problems. And, you know, individual student desks are a very hot commodity, just like N95 masks were a year ago. So we were, we found two sources, and one was a little bit, I deemed a little bit more reliable than the other in terms of production and delivery. And so I have every confidence that the vendor's going to deliver when they say on March 25th and 26th and work over that weekend for us. And part of the good news is, is that these are local vendors. And the final assembly of these desks is actually occurring in the city of Worcester. So that's why I chose them over the other provider, which was out of state. So I have, you know, full confidence that that's going to happen, and that's just one, you know, element of all these logistical pieces around resources of things and, you know, that we're moving around and whatnot. But the other, I think, frankly, the other more complicated logistical matters, under the umbrella of logistical matters that are far more complex and difficult to deal with, Dr. Sawyer referenced earlier, are the student assignments and rosters that building principals are working on now to try to reassign students and figure out who is coming exactly for which grade level. And dealing with all of those issues, the scheduling issues, working with Mrs. Clowder to try to solve all of those problems. And frankly, the other part that comes under this umbrella is the staffing issues. And Mrs. Malone working on all of those issues with remote staff, which ones are coming back, which one can come back, which, what additional staff we might need. Those, those things are not, you know, things that you touch and see, but really critically important and frankly, far more complex. Because every time, you know, that we're going to have to move a student from, you know, for example, Mrs. Smith's class, because now we're at, you know, 27 or 28, we need to move that, that requires a phone call, a very difficult phone call. It's not a, you know, hey, we're going to move your kid, you know, thanks a lot, see you later. I mean, that's, that's a time-consuming effort that our administrators and building principals are going to have to deal with, as is all the staffing issues. So those things, frankly, in my opinion, are far, far more complicated, time-consuming, and difficult to deal with than, than these issues, which are frankly, you know, concrete, tangible things, and will make those things happen.
Right. I think it's like an operational, for lack of a better word, those behind-the-scenes operational things that are going to have to be done on top of everything else in such a short amount of time. I agree. And I think another point to be made for the public is, you know, like Jason said, there's a lot going on. You know, we're kind of getting things with hybrid and remote, but we're also doing it on top of a very difficult budget cycle right now, where there's a lot of moving parts behind the scenes and a lot of work being done by central office at the same time. So there's a lot of work going on, and I thank you to everybody who's involved with that and all of the principals who are working on getting everybody back now that we have this mandate, so.
We're going to have students who are in cohort D who are special education students, who we haven't seen physically, they're going to be coming back, that we're going to need to hire additional staffing for in this very short period of time. So those things are the more difficult hills for us to climb.
Right. And that there's concerns maybe even finding those employees to staff those students. Right. A lot to do. Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
No. I appreciate the support and again, appreciate all the work that our leadership team is doing. They're doing remarkable work this year, all of our staff, but our, our leadership team continues to just take every new challenge. These are, this has been, you know, this will be a very heavy lift after a year of very heavy lifts. So it's, but they continue to take it on, and I couldn't be more proud.
Do we have a vote before us? Okay, so we may have a motion that the school committee vote that the district request a waiver from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education so that the grade five may be aligned with the others, with the other middle school level grades regarding the timeline for a return to full in-person education.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to move on to our public hearing, and there are two components to the public hearing this evening. the public hearing this evening. First will be a public hearing for the FY22 budget, and this requirement meets the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 71, Section 38N, which allows the public the opportunity for, to provide feedback on our proposed school district budget. And the second allows the public to provide information or feedback on school choice, which would be indistrict school choice for the 21-22 school year. That would be us receiving students into Shrewsbury Public Schools, and that's Massachusetts General Law Chapter 76, Section 12B. So we did, since we are virtual, we had anyone who wished to speak actually sign up, and Mr. De La Rue will be helping. So we will be having individuals speak one at a time, and as you come on to the Zoom meeting, I will ask that you introduce yourself by name and give your address, and keep your, you know, five minutes or less, your comments to the committee. And again, it's two subjects. You can speak about public, our public hearing again is on the budget and school choice. So those are the two topics that we're listening to tonight. So our first speaker.
Hello?
Oh.
Hi, my name is Colleen Corbett. I live at 107 Cherry Street. Good evening, and thank you to the school committee for this opportunity to speak. I have two children at Oak Middle School who receive special education services, and I am president of Shrewsbury CPAC. I have volunteered for the campaign override effort in our community and have written to the board of selectmen urging them to fund our schools by placing Proposition 2.5 Operational Override on the May ballot. I felt heartsick as I watched the budget reduction presentation in late February. The thought of another round of cuts, including closing media centers and losing 50 teachers after the year we've been through, was deeply distressing. While I always had deep respect and appreciation for our educators in our town, sitting next to my children as they received lessons this past school year has increased that respect exponentially. The ability to engage students through a screen is challenging, and I marveled at their teachers' patience and skill as my children navigated the ins and outs of remote Over my family's years in town, my children have both struggled and thrived in the classroom with the support of general and special education teachers, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, and many paraprofessionals. It's heartening to see that much of the groundwork laid in elementary school is coming to fruition now. It takes a village to raise an educated child, and I truly believe that school staff care deeply about their students and want them to succeed. During this unprecedented pandemic, our schools have gone above and beyond to educate and care for our children. With national trends showing significantly increased rates of mental health issues affecting students, now is not the time for less support and larger class sizes. The pandemic has made students who were already vulnerable even more so. Many students with learning challenges have been severely impacted and will require extra attention and services once full-time learning resumes. Budget cuts will hurt all students, but they will hurt our most vulnerable students disproportionately. I believe that our town is one that cares about education and will work to avert this education emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Okay, next, you have the voter from Molina. Thank you. I really appreciate hearing Colleen's comments as well. My name is Glenavir Molina, and I live at 31 Wachusett Avenue. I want to thank you for hosting this public forum tonight and echo that I fully support this override, as I see the need for the funding to support our educational programming. I'm here to speak as a parent of three students in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, and I'm also an indistrict teacher. I have served on the boards of several PTOs for seven years, helping to support and raise needed funds to supplement what our school budget simply cannot cover. Like most families I speak with, my family settled in Shrewsbury to raise our children with high-quality schools and to be active participants in our community. Without the override this spring, we'll be faced with closing all of our elementary school media centers, which is a devastating loss to our K-4 students, who truly need our access to media and literature now more than ever. Our town voters overwhelmingly supported building our new Beale School, and without the override, we cannot open his plans at a time when we need this classroom space. Our elementary schools are overcrowded, and we cannot fit a full-day kindergarten for all of our students. I can't even fathom these cuts costing us another 50 essential members of our school staff after we just cut 30 FTEs to save $1.9 million from this year's budget. I urge our board of selectmen and voters to put this on the May ballot and vote to approve the operational override to provide our students with the quality of education that they deserve from our community and to stop the erosion of our services and staffing. I do want to add to my concerns that we're making four- to five-year plans based on a very bare-bones budget that includes that $1.9 million in cuts that we're suffering this academic year. It is no secret that our students are in an educational crisis during this pandemic. Now is not the time to strip away vital programming and staffing. To close the budget gap this year, we're forced to make significant cuts to our literacy tutors. This is deeply concerning to me, and I raised this concern in a public forum when it was first announced. Our literacy tutors are vital to student success in typical years, and even more critical in helping our most vulnerable students gain much-needed literacy skills as we recover from the learning losses of this pandemic. I urge our town leadership to consider adding funding to cover our literacy tutoring and other essential services beyond our absolute bare-bones budget and our longer-term planning. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rosemary Royer. Hello, this is Rosemary Royer. I am the Patton School Media Aid, and I live at 11 Wachusett Circle. This is my 15th year of, wait a minute, let me just turn this off. I work in the Patton School Library, and since it appears that our elementary libraries are in jeopardy of closing, I wanted to outline the program that these media centers currently offer. We have a book entitled, "The Librarian on the Roof," which is a true story about a librarian in a small Texas town who spent a week camping on the roof to draw attention to the plight of libraries, and she was trying to keep the library open. I think the elementary media aide is starting to feel that she is a kindred spirit. When many of us were young, our elementary school libraries were small, and students would visit them if they needed a couple of books for a research project. We didn't tend to know the librarians very well. Indeed, at one school I attended, I think our secretary opened us up if a teacher or student needed a book. Then she would lock it up again afterwards. How times have changed for the better. Our elementary media centers have become integral parts of our school day. Most elementary students in Shrewsbury have media lessons twice a week and enjoy checking out one or two books per week to take home to read for fun, in addition to any books that are needed for school research. Students learn how to find a just-right book and recommend books and authors to each other. This helps promote good reading habits and a love of literature. The elementary media program also provides enrichment and complements the curriculum being taught in the classrooms. It focuses on author studies, making predictions, visualization, genres of literature, noting the sequence of a story, comparing fiction versus nonfiction, and different versions of folktales and fairy tales from around the world. Media aides also help students to navigate their reading of longer-chapter books in the older graces. The program provides enrichment when students learn about holidays and observances in the United States, such as Martin is a King Day and Earth Day, Veterans Day, and traditions, celebrations, and customs from around the world. Students learn about Diwali, Ramadan, Chinese New Year, St. Patrick's Day, and Hanukkah, to name a few. Since foreign languages have sadly been eliminated from elementary schools, our media centers can attempt to be a bridge to the world. This helps us all understand each other a little more. In recent years, we have received shipments of absolutely beautiful, culturally-responsive books, and there's been an explosion of stunning biographies for children of different ages. These new titles help to explain complex accomplishments and contributions by large in the life people in a way that children will understand. They make historical figures come to life. There's also been a remarkable uptick in titles about the contributions of women, who have been, whose accomplishments have been kept in the shadows for so long. Think of the contributions made to the space program by women in the movie Hidden Figures. We have books on them. Probably the biggest changes in the media centers in the last few years have been the implementation of technology and media research lessons, which have culminated in students creating a final research project on Google Slides. For example, using iPads, students last year were able to research databases to gather information and pictures on a country or continent of their choice to enter into their Google Slide presentation. Seventh grade have created their own autobiographies, third-grade biographies. They enjoy proudly presenting their slides on the whiteboard to their classmates. Students also look at online dictionaries and thesauruses as part of their library skills lesson. In the interest of time, I've only described a small portion of what the children experience in their elementary media lessons during their five years in our elementary school. Media aides, in addition to the teaching program, also run the day-to-day operations in their libraries as directed by the media specialist, and they help provide resources for teachers. Going back to "The Librarian on the Roof," fortunately, while we have a good collection of books, we need to remain open and to keep the doors unlocked to share all this treasure. Please keep our elementary school media centers open to enable this program to continue to complement the curriculum and to provide enrichment for our students. Please vote yes for an override. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we don't probably have anybody else with their hand raised?
So is there anyone there, but no one has their hand up?
Uh, no, he has, I'll see if he hasn't.
So no one wants, so we've got a couple there. Give her one more minute, if anybody wants to. So we have a lot of people signed up.
Just to clarify, are there folks in the room who have not raised their hand?
Uh, no, a lot of people in the room who have spoken.
Thank you.
Oh, so nobody's left that has, okay.
It would probably be good just to remind folks, certainly, that they can continue to offer their feedback to us by email.
Absolutely. So we have many people sign up, so if anybody wants to send us an email that didn't actually speak this evening, just email us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. We have, we definitely want to hear from everybody about the budget, and also, again, we do have, we're not going to vote on school choice until our next meeting on the 24th. Again, that is if we, to receive students in to the district, and we vote on, we have to vote on not receiving, and that's something we do every year. So if anybody has a question or comment on that, we'd like to hear that as well. So anything further from the committee before we close the public hearing? No, a motion that we close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for helping with that. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to discussion about our, the possibility of an operational override in the FY22 budget. On March 2nd, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the possibilities of an operational override to provide adequate funding for town government, including the school department. And at that meeting, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins provided information to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Mizikar provided information to us on the municipality. So I'll turn it to Dr. Sawyer, and if there's anything he'd like to add before we discuss that meeting publicly.
Thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Collins to assist me with this as well. First off, I wanted to just express my appreciation to Mr. Mizikar, the town manager in for the Board of Selectmen, for bringing forth this concept that was discussed in the joint meeting with the school committee last week. I think it has a great deal of merit, and I think it's a fiscally responsible pathway to not only avoid a disastrous situation that we would experience next year, would enable us to open the new Beale School as intended, would avoid the kind of cuts to some of which you just heard about from some of the folks' testimony during the public hearing, and would provide some opportunity incrementally over time to actually do some level of restoration of the losses we've experienced this year and/or make improvements based on the strategic priorities that the school committee has charged the school district with. In order to move things forward in advance of the next joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, I understand it will be next Tuesday evening, I think it's important for the school committee and the community to understand some different elements in terms of how this might work relative to the so-called Arlington Plan approach that was promoted to the school committee by the Board of Selectmen as a pathway forward. The idea would be that an operational override would be passed for a certain sum of money, that that sum of money would be more than is needed just to plug the hole and bring the district intact into the next fiscal year, but have additional monies that could be put in a stabilization account, and then over time could be drawn down in order to say to the community that the intent and the commitment from, jointly from the Board of Selectmen and the school committee is not to request another operational override for some period of time. That period of time, based on the conversation that was had last week, and Mr. Mizikar's projections look to be a sort of a four- to five-year range potentially, and I think that level of stability would be incredibly welcome, certainly by the leadership team here, not worrying year over year on some of the vagaries of the economy and revenues, and knowing there's that hard cap of what's going to be able to be done and trying to figure out what we can maintain, what we may need to reduce, or what we might be able to add around the edges. So I do think there is a lot of merit. The document that's up on the screen right now, which I'll ask in a moment Mr. Luer to zoom in on a couple of parts of it, excuse me, is an updated projection that Mr. Collins completed earlier this week and that we did share with Mr. Mizikar, who I understand shared with the Board of Selectmen, which is to illustrate, you know, we had done a projection back in the December-January timeframe that was essentially a projection based on modeling, looking at historical budget data for the school department over time. And it certainly aligned very nicely with the budget projections that have been made back in 2017, when Dr. McGee and Mr. Samia, who was then on the school committee and now on the Board of Selectmen, and Mr. Collins did some similar exercises. And those projections have been very thoughtfully done and very accurate over time. This is the next level down of detail. Mr. Collins took and made a variety of assumptions based on some of those historical data, but as you can see, it's broken down into the various categories that we typically report out to the school committee when we give budget updates. You know, so it's not to the line-item level, but more in a grouping level. And some of those projections are based on, again, historical increases, the sort of inflation factors that we know to be very typical in a public education environment in Massachusetts. Others take into account things that might happen in certain years. One good example of that would be in transportation. The transportation contract we're in right now with our vendor, AA Transportation, has been an excellent partner with, to us, expires after next fiscal year. And we can expect, based on what's been happening in that segment of the economy in transportation bids for school districts, we can expect that when that five-year contract is over, the next contract is going to require a pretty substantial increase in rate for the next five-year, assuming it would be a next-five-year contract. That's baked into this assumption that the transportation costs will go up pretty significantly in FY24, I believe it is. In terms of the, or actually, I'm sorry, FY23. So essentially, this is, again, a little bit more- bids for school districts, we can expect that when that five-year contract is over, the next contract is going to require a pretty substantial increase in rate for the next five-year, assuming it would be a next five-year contract. That's baked into this assumption that the transportation costs will go up pretty significantly in FY '24, I believe it is. In terms of the... Or actually, I'm sorry, FY '23. So, essentially, this is, again, a little bit more of a detailed of a projection. The really key information here is it goes to the bottom line. And if Mr. Leroux would be so kind as to zoom in on sort of the yellow highlighted line and the rectangle just below that. So, if you can just slide over to the right a little bit, Brian. Bring it back. There we go. And if you could just maybe starting with the $67 million number in red, you can just sort of start there on the left-hand side and blow it up a little bit more. That would be great. And slide it over to the right, please. Thank you. Terrific. So, you can see there essentially is a projection that shows... This shows the bottom line. The number in red, 67995283, is our current budget this year, appropriated budget for the school department. The next number in red, 75440214, is the budget that I filed in early February that would be required to bring our current program forward, open the New Beal School, so a significant improvement, but with, you know, substantial investment in staff to make that happen appropriately, and then nothing else restored from what's happening. So, essentially, keep the status quo programming we have now and open the New Beal School. But a very substantial increase. It's about 11-plus percent budget increase that that represents. What this illustrates is that if we receive that amount and then, over the next four years, fiscal year '23, '24, '25, and '26, what the estimate is of what it would take to maintain that program. Not add anything new, just maintain what we put into place next year with those additional staff being funded to open the New Beal School and carry forward what we have in existence now. And what you can see in the rectangle below those figures is what the dollar increase each year would be and what the percentage increase would be each year just to maintain what we have. And you can see that in year two or fiscal year '23, we would need a 4.1% increase to maintain what we put into place next year. The following year, we'd need a 3.86% increase. Year after that, 3.7%. The year after that, 3.77%. When you average those together, it's about 3.9%. So, the bottom line issue here is that we need, you know, a smidge under 4% a year to maintain our status quo if we're able to add those staff to open the New Beal School and keep what we have in place now. And that's obviously critically important, and we're not going backwards. But that doesn't also speak to the idea of restoring some of the cuts we experienced this year or being able to make incremental improvements to our program in order to, you know, continuously improve what we're providing to students. So, in the sections below, that element there, Mr. Collins made three additional projections based on the conversation that was had with the Selectmen and Mr. Mizikar last week. Because essentially, what's key to this Arlington Plan is an agreement as to what the essentially, the growth rate for municipal departments and for the school department would be, that we would essentially commit to remaining within in order to sustain the override for a certain period of time, in order to sustain that funding. And so, Mr. Collins ran that at a 4% increase every year, and then a four-and-a-quarter increase and a four-and-a-half percent increase. If you look at the box there that you can see on your screen now that is a 4% increase in the second year, because we actually would need 4.1% just to maintain, would actually be about $73,000 below what we'd need to be if we only get a 4% budget. You know, I'm sure that's something we could work out, but it's essentially a status quo budget. The following year, we'd have an extra $29,000, some odd dollars, in addition to what it takes to move things forward, which in the size of a... And that year would be an $81.5 million budget is obviously de minimis. That's a rounding piece, right? And so, not... Nothing really in years one or two. By the time the third year would come around after the override were to be successful, there would be about $275,000 that would be available, because we are projecting we'd only need 3.7% to maintain. So, the rest of that, between that and 4%, could be used to bring something back that's been cut or make some other kind of improvement or enhancement. And then, in the fourth year, fifth year total, after an override, you would see that there would be... Well, it's sort of one key factor here, you'll notice that... You'll see that, you know, we invested that $29,000 in year three. And then, we have to carry that forward, because we need to maintain it. So, the next year, you see that's $30,914, so we're raising that by 4% in this model. The following year, if we invested that $244,397, well, the following year, we'd need to allocate $254,173 to maintain whatever we bought with those dollars in year four. And so, you know, this model is very responsible fiscally, because it doesn't add staff without any knowledge of whether or not you can afford to keep them. Or if you added some curriculum material or subscription system software, whatever it might be, we know the money would be there the next year to maintain it. And then, in the final year, there'd be about $193,000 new dollars available. I think the key piece here with the 4% growth factor is that, you know, for a budget our size and a program our size, it doesn't really do much other than sustain what we have and then maybe allows us to make some incremental increases very much around the edges out in sort of years two, three, four, and five. Or three, four, and five, it'd actually be a challenge to maintain it in the first year. If you look at the next box up, and if you could bring that up on the screen a little bit further, Mr. the other direction, please, the purple, you see it, a four-and-a-quarter percent growth factor. And just with a quarter percent increase in sort of what the allotment would be for the school department in terms of the amount we could raise our appropriated budget each year, things actually improve a decent amount compared to just 4%. In the first year after the override year, so the second year total, fiscal year '23, there'd actually be about $114,000 to add something back with or make an improvement. The year after that, even with carrying that $114,000 forward and, you know, baking in a little bit of an increase for inflation there, you'd have $300,000 to do some improvements with or restorations. Year four, about $450,000. And year five, another $400,000. We can make some substantial restorations and improvements with dollars like that. You know, obviously, the more we can do, the better in terms of enhancing our program. But that's a very different scenario than the 4% scenario. And then, finally, the 4.5% model, which you see in green, that would provide even more opportunity to start to restore the $1.9 million in cuts or targeted restorations over time and/or adding things that we might need. Obviously, some of the unknowns are what are some of the mandates we might face in the coming years? What are some of the expectations that the state would have or the federal government on local school districts, as we live in a highly regulatory environment in this field? So, that is the way that that projection was made. And before I... I'll ask Mr. Collins to correct anything I've said if it's wrong. I do want to slide down to the second spreadsheet in this document, which is the exact same approach. The only difference being it adds in for next year, not only the budget that I filed, but also adds on top of that about, I think it's about $240,000, Mr. Collins, which essentially would be able to fund four additional teaching positions. It would be... Enable us to bring back four positions that otherwise, you know, something that we lost this current year. This is for illustrative purposes. And again, when I filed my budget, just not thinking that there's a whole lot of room to do anything other than open the New Beal School, given the circumstances we're in. But if it were possible with this Arlington model to add a little bit more upfront for this incremental restoration and improvement, my recommendation would be to target restoring the two fifth-grade teachers that we cut this year to address class size there and to restore two of the three high school teaching positions. We had one in math and one in science that we cut last year through attrition because of... After a couple of retirements, we didn't replace them. So, that would be on top of the very significant improvements we make at the elementary level through opening the New Beal. And I think the key piece here is that it doesn't change the other numbers very much at all. I mean, again, on the budget our size and $240,000 upfront incrementally over the next five years, doesn't really make that much of a difference. And the bottom line is that the 4% growth rate, again, doesn't do much other than just sustain what gets put into place next year with a successful override. Four-and-a-quarter does provide some opportunity incrementally over time to do some things to restore and improve. And then, a four-and-a-half percent, of course, does even better at that. But by adding some of those things in, if we were able to make something like that happen, which those are really critically important positions, especially with what we're experiencing with class size pressures now with returning to full-in-person school, this is something that would demonstrate that we believe the school department could stay within an agreement around a growth factor of its appropriated budget. Obviously, some of the work that needs to happen for next Tuesday is, you know, what would happen if there were years where the revenue projections that this are based on, you know, did better? What if they did worse? You know, how will we manage that? And of course, we're very good at managing our budget year over year in terms of staying within what's allotted. You know, in my superintendency, and I don't believe in my predecessors, has the school department ever come to the finance committee in the middle of the year saying, "We're not going to have enough money to make it through the end of the year." We always manage our resources extremely well. The problem is we don't have enough resources sometimes to do the things we should be doing. So, this is an illustration of how the school department could be in a much, much improved situation for the next five years. And I cannot emphasize enough that that kind of budget stability would do... I mean, the ability for frankly, our school district to focus on doing the day-to-day work of educating students instead of spending hours upon hours of figuring out how we're going to make do with less and manage a budget problem again year after year or uncertainty, that is incredibly valuable to this community. I think the school committee has said loud and clear that your desire is to try to have a situation where we minimally maintain the services we offer and then build, you know, either restore what we've lost to whatever degree we can or build in improvements where they make sense over time, that we should not be going backwards because of a structural deficit situation. And I do think that this Arlington Plan does provide an excellent opportunity for this town to make a very thoughtful, fiscally responsible decision that is conservative in the nature that it conserves what we have and what this community values and, you know, at the cost of doing business. And there's a cost of doing business to provide the appropriate educational services to students based on the expectations of what a Shrewsbury education would be for them. So, with that, I'll just ask Mr. Collins, is there any other thoughts he has based on... I appreciate the modeling he did. We have communicated this to Mr. Mizikar, and he has communicated to the Board of Selectmen. And before the school committee makes any comments, I don't know if Patrick would like to add anything.
I'll just add a couple of comments echoing some of yours. But I know in Mr. Mizikar's presentation last evening to the Board of Selectmen, he showed a chart that demonstrated the various percentage increases. I think it was going back to maybe 2008. Very similar to a chart that we showed in our five-year projection model. And you can see those percentages from year to year go in a pattern like this, varying widely and not having predictability nor stability. And so, that this so-called Arlington model of planning out the next four to five years in terms of the resources financially that you need to provide stability, which again was another term that Mr. Samia used in terms of describing how this would work, I think would be of great value to our community for both municipal and educational services. You know, this whole topic of an override, you know, I know that also Mr. Mizikar mentioned that when communities do support overrides, operational overrides, and when they do support debt exclusions for capital projects, those actions showing community support actually enhance one's outlook or rating from the rating agencies, which provide the bond rating, because it shows community support, that they want to invest in the continued success of their community. It's not a sign of failure by any means. It's a sign of wanting to build forward in a strategic way. And then, I guess finally, as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, the notion of, you know, asking for a little bit more than what you need upfront so that you can build in predictability for the upcoming four years provides us a pathway towards improvement as well. And, you know, that would go an enormous way in terms of how we lay out the next four to five years and our strategic priorities for our next strategic plan. So, this would be, I think, a really inflection point for our community in terms of strategic planning for the level of services that we want to provide and predictability of those level of services. So, it's really exciting to have this discussion, and I certainly hope that it can go forward successfully.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the committee? Dale?
This is a good plan here that you put up. I like the modeling that has been done. I think the important thing is what happens on the Selectmen's side. We all agree that we need an override. We all agree that there needs to be some stabilization. The Arlington model that was presented represents real progress for Shrewsbury. I think it puts us on a sound business foundation that allows us to predict what's going to come in the future and respond before the crisis arises. So, the stabilization fund idea that's part of this is, I think, a very good idea. I think that the presentation by Mr. Mizikar yesterday was excellent. He presented the nine-and-a-half million dollar number that he had presented to us at an earlier meeting. And he also modeled some smaller numbers, which, to my mind, illustrated how those would bring on a problem sooner, that we would not be saving money so much as getting into trouble sooner. And the original proposal of nine-and-a-half seemed like a very good idea. And I think comments by the Selectmen, particularly Mr. DiPaolo and Mr. Samia, showed me that there's a lot of very constructive thinking going on among the Selectmen, and I have high hopes for this moving forward.
Thank you. Jason?
I certainly won't belabor here any points around the need for additional revenues through an operational override, which is something that everyone on this committee has been talking about for some time now. I want to echo Dr. McGee's comments in expressing my thanks and appreciation to the town manager and to our counterparts for their conversations around an approach that not only addresses the emergency in front of us now, but also represents long-term thinking, as I have conversations with members of the community, especially members of our parent community. And folks, we're not members of our parent community. I hear not only a desire to address the situation before us, but to see our community address the situation for the long term. Shrewsbury's structural deficit has plagued this town for many years. This will be my 10th budget cycle, I believe, and there have been very few where we haven't been having some form of a conversation like this. It's time of... The time has come for Shrewsbury to take steps, not just to address the problem in front of us, but to try to address the problem a few years down the road. So, I too am optimistic about the thinking that has taken hold here.
Thank you. Lindsey?
I appreciate all the work that you presented here tonight. There's certainly lots of numbers, and I appreciate the walking through step by step, because when I opened it in my email, I didn't follow it completely. I guess I want to just reiterate for the community what I feel is an incredibly urgent matter for us and that we not get too bogged down in some of these weeds and we continue to push this matter forward. I have a great respect for Mr. Mizikar and understand the conversation they had with the Board of Selectmen last night. I think the numbers that we're looking at this evening remind me that landing somewhere in the 4.25% to 4.5% range would help us make incredible improvements. I think it's a fairly modest request, honestly, Dr. Sawyer, to say that we just need four additional FTEs, given 28 that we lost last year. So, that doesn't seem in any way disproportionate, given the magnitudes of the cuts that we had to go through last year. I think it's... In the Arlington model, I'm definitely in favor of the idea of a stabilization fund, the idea of some long-term planning in this community as being baked in feels very important to me. I think it's incumbent upon us, along with our colleagues at the board, to land on what is the right percentage range and what is the right number of years in which we can make a commitment to this community and to do so with all deliberate speed. And so, we know whether we're moving forward, that there will be an override on the ballot this spring, or whether we have to make some dramatic and painful cuts. So, I hope... I think the conversations have been really good and really positive, but we don't have any time to stall.
Joe?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. Certainly, over the last two weeks, I've had many conversations with concerned parents with regards to the budget challenges. with regards to the budget challenges presenting kind of the high-level overview of where we stand at a parent's. And, you know, a lot of the comments that I've heard, you know, as they kind of view our presentation is, you know, around with all the fiscal studies that we've done in Shrewsbury over the last 15 years, you know, clearly documenting that structural deficit that we always talk about, why isn't there more long-term financial planning happening in Shrewsbury to avoid these budget challenges? And it's a good question, but I think, you know, as encouraged, you know, on our March 2nd meeting by the Arlington Model, because I think that does allow a pathway forward. And I do appreciate the forward thinking from our Town Manager, Kevin Mizikar. I think he's showing all of us what that long-term financial planning might look like in this town. I think the question is whether or not there's an interest or a will to do something about it, you know? I think, you know, as Mr. Collins said, this is an inflection point for our community. So, you know, I think it's important to just stay focused on what Plan B truly looks like. It's very grim, and it's, you know, $4.8 million and 48 full-time employees. And I also want to be sure that, you know, in light of the recent news today with regards to the new COVID relief dollars that have been approved, that there's no false narrative around what those dollars might be used for. We have yet to really confirm what that is, but it's not as though it's this big windfall that's going to solve these financial challenges that predate COVID. I mean, if history tells us anything, from what we've seen from the recent COVID dollars and the use base, the one-time use, you know, based of that funding, it's likely going to follow suit with opening schools and making sure, you know, we're able to provide the necessary resources for what after-school looks like.
Great. And I agree. I think what we have in front of us from Mr. Mizikar is that opportunity and solution to what's been a longstanding structural deficit problem in our community for years and years. And it's a solution to the current budget problem. It's also, it enables us to open Beal. And while I think that those two items are really important, I think that the most important piece is that stabilization fund that would be created that does begin that long-term solution to the structural deficit. And it provides stability, predictability, and we don't lose ground as a school department. We have a four to five year, as Dr. Sawyer said, we don't have to worry about having the same budget conversation year, every year, and spending so much time on it. And I think, I want to say, Monday, Lindsay and I had a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, John and Beth, along with Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Mizikar. And at that meeting, they asked for additional information. So in the midst of trying to figure out how to open elementary schools, Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer did a whole new, and this is part of the work that they did behind the scenes to provide to the Board of Selectmen. Yesterday, Dr. Sawyer sent an email along with new information so that they could have as much detail as necessary to think about this override request that we have. Again, all this is going on behind the scenes, so there's a lot of work. But I think, again, this is a solution. It's really smart budgeting. I think in my estimate, it's a commitment to the community for that. We're going to have, we're not going to fall behind, we're going to have a commitment to maintain or improve for a period of time, and the community will know what the cost is. So I fully support this. I am very grateful to Mr. Mizikar for bringing this forward. I think it's a very smart move. So we-
Mrs. Fritz, could I just make one more comment? I just wanted to pick up on what Mr. Wensky said as well in terms of stimulus funding approved today. And just to remind the committee members in the community at large that regardless of what dollars come forward to the school department as a result of that, that it is, those dollars will definitely be restricted funding. And, you know, the simple analogy is that, you know, when you hear about or read about, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Smith donated $10 million to XYZ College, and you have a child going to that college, you think, hmm, I wonder if my tuition's going to stay the same or go down? Well, no, right? I mean, because they donated that money to build a building and put their name on it, right? That's restricted money. And all of the dollars, all of the dollars that we've received so far from stimulus funding have been restricted. And we have to report on these dollars exactly what we're spending them on, on a quarterly basis, to the Department of Education, what vendors we are spending the money with, what did we spend? And so I would totally anticipate that whatever new dollars that we see will not help our financial situation. They'll be one-time dollars, not recurring dollars, and they will be restricted and not help our situation. So I just want to make that distinction very clearly, that that is not a solution to our problem whatsoever.
And I think that's an important point to make because that was a question that was raised last night during the Board of Selectmen meeting. And as we move forward with our discussions, we'll have one next Tuesday is our second meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I think that's part of this ongoing discussion we have to have to make sure all of that is clarified as we move forward because they need to make, as Lindsay said, we have, there's a timing issue for us as we especially need to talk about opening the Beal School. Anything further, any questions or comments? Anything further, Dr. Sawyer?
No, thank you.
Great. And again, thank you for everything that you've done to you and Mr. Collins, again, getting all this information done behind the scenes with everything else that's going on. Okay, next, we will move on to a discussion on the school calendar for the 2021-2022 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. And Mr. Leroux actually just sent you a PDF of the proposed calendar, if you don't mind pulling it up on the screen since we have that opportunity this evening technology-wise when you have a chance. We're a little later than we typically are, but obviously, we've been trying to do a little prognostication as to what things might be looking like next year. And so, but we do need to get a calendar into place so that our families and our staff can plan for the next school year, which we're looking forward to being a much different school year than the current year for a whole host of reasons. But in terms of the proposal that you received this evening and will ask you to consider, we'll post it on our website, the parent families can give feedback on it over the course of the next two weeks before you'll be asked to vote on it at your next meeting on March 24th. And we have also vetted this draft calendar with, as we do each year, with our two main employees associations, the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A and the Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association. And what this represents is, for the most part, the typical school calendar you would experience in terms of the traditional vacation periods, December, around the holidays there, as well as the week of President's Day in February, the week of Patriots' Day in April, the three-day break Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at Thanksgiving. Those are typical. We're also required by state law to not hold classes on days that are state holidays. And I'll speak about that a little bit more as we go forward here, but that just is a function of what we have to convey to people is when there won't be any school. The sort of key change that you'll see in this calendar is for the first time, as long as, if this is approved by the school committee, for the first time since I came here in 1997, we would actually start the school year for students after Labor Day. And the reason for that recommendation is because, first off, there still is some unpredictability about what we're going to need to do to set our schools up next year, whether three-foot distancing will still be a requirement or not, et cetera. But it also means, and I'm going to be optimistic, that we're going to have the funding to open a brand-new elementary school. And frankly, every day that we have available in the summer to get, make that happen is important. And if you, I see you've blown that up on the screen, Mr. Leroux, you can see for August and September, by moving the first day of school for students to the day after Labor Day, which is September 7th, we would be able to utilize the last full week in August entirely for preparation for that new building, when typically that week would be a lot of administrative meetings, new teacher orientation. We're pushing those to the Monday and Tuesday, August 30th and 31st. We would have our traditional opening day for staff on Wednesday, September 1st. And then we would have, you know, we have been traditionally having our professional development days, the two full professional development days that are in the contract. One, we've been typically having after the students start and holding on the Friday of Labor Day weekend, and then the second one on the Friday prior to the Columbus Day holiday. In terms of the, this frontloads both of those days prior to the first day of school for students. Again, the advantage here is to make sure that we're going to be opening, not only opening a brand-new elementary school, where Mr. Girardi as the Principal of Beal would then have the opportunity of an opening day and two professional development days to work with, you know, a staff that's going to be very much new to each other. Lots of existing Beal School staff, but lots of additional staff, either who have moved from other elementary schools within Shrewsbury or who have been hired new. And then each of our other elementary schools is going to have new configuration as well. They're going to have different staffing. So having those two days up front, we think, is very valuable. And again, it gives us more time to make sure that when we open the doors on September 7th, we are as ready to go as we possibly can be. Typically, parents visit with their children for kindergarten and preschool on that first day of school, and then the first student day for preschool and kindergarten is the next day, so that's September 8th. And then we would have a really steady number of days without any interruptions right through mid-October. However, because we'd be missing that professional development day we typically have in October, the recommendation is to move one of the five early release days to Tuesday, October 5th. That would enable us to maintain some of the momentum of some of the professional development programming that we have. As far as other days, we would maintain the Teacher Conference Day on the first Tuesday in November, as is traditional, although the logistical piece, there's no election this year, we don't really need to do that because of the spring screening, schoolage being used as polling places. But in terms of the timing of the trimester, what families are used to, what teachers are used to in terms of their planning, ultimately, we just decided it made the most sense to keep that day there. Veterans Day is always on the 11th regardless, that's the following Thursday. And then again, the rest of the year is pretty typical when it comes to days off. One change that we made starting this year, although this year it might be adapted a little bit, just because of, more because of our pandemic circumstances, was to move kindergarten and preschool screening up into early May. So it'll be a couple of days in early May when kindergarten and preschool students would not have school so that we could perform screening on next-year students. And that's something the principals thought would be extremely valuable to them, and it maintains that. And if you look at the end of the school year, sort of the key piece is that the last day of school is, you know, a few days later than what it typically is out of the gate. I mean, it's Friday, June 17th. What we don't know yet is whether or not the Department of Education is going to approve for school districts to be able to utilize remote learning days in a post-pandemic world in lieu of snow days. And I'm not sitting here saying that's what we would do or wouldn't do, but the question is, will they allow that as an opportunity, given the experiences of, you know, obviously more robust learning, remote learning that students and families are used to? But, you know, if that were the case, it would give us a little bit more control if we did happen to have a bad winter and lots of days where we couldn't attend school because of the weather. And so the 17th would be the last day of school, absent any snow days, where we had to move later into the next week. Which brings me to one of the holiday name changes, or not name changes, but additions, as was mentioned by Ms. Hilton, who participated in public participation this evening. Juneteenth, Independence Day is a new state holiday that was approved last spring or early summer, I believe, and is observed every year on June 19th. And I appreciate Ms. Hilton bringing this to the school committee's attention, it's something that we had looked at. We looked at it for this year first because it is in effect for this coming June. It is currently our last day of school, everybody has to knock on wood that we have no more snow days, but we may have a remote day if it were the case, is currently scheduled for Friday, June 18th. And when a state holiday is, falls on a Saturday, it's legally observed on the Saturday. So this year, Juneteenth, Independence Day would not affect our school calendar, even if we ended up having another snow day for some reason. Next year, it falls June 19th. The following year, 2022, June 19th falls on Sunday, June 19th. And under state law, if a state holiday falls on a Sunday, it must be legally observed on the Monday immediately after. And so based on Ms. Hilton's communication, it occurred to me to look at that again, and I honestly, in my first draft of this, forgotten about the Sunday-Mondays rule. And so you see on the calendar the June 20th, although the school district, the school year may end the Friday prior, that has to be blocked out as a state holiday. And so if we did have any number of snow days, we would not be able to make up a snow day on June 20th because that would be the state holiday, Juneteenth, Independence Day. The first makeup day would be on June 21st and so forth, depending on how many days we would need to make up. So that is one addition based on the new state law, that that is a new state holiday in Massachusetts. And then the last piece that has to do with the holiday piece, as you heard from Ms. Zaire earlier in the, reading a letter that's signed by about 200 different members of the community, was with regard to Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And my recommendation in this calendar is to include language, to add the language that Monday in October would be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day in addition to Columbus Day. Columbus Day remains the official state holiday, that is, the day that is publicized, of course, in the media, newspapers about closures and so forth. And it is my recommendation that the Columbus Day title be listed there because that is still the official state holiday, but that because Indigenous Peoples' Day has continued to become in recent years a much more widely recognized day that honors and commemorates the Native Peoples of America, and given our school districts' efforts to increase certainly the sense of belonging and inclusivity for our students, families, and staff, I believe that that language addition and going with an "and" approach as opposed to an "or" approach is appropriate in this case. So you see there in the document that it is listed as Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, no school day in the school calendar. And just with that, my final comment would be, of course, that, you know, the listing of different holidays in a school calendar is not what I would perceive to be a value judgment about a holiday or the purpose of a holiday. It's really more of a pragmatic element relative to what days there are school or not. There are other holidays, of course, whether that's Earth Day or Arbor Day or Flag Day or whatnot, but we don't list in this calendar because they're not no-school days. There's really a pragmatic purpose to this, to signal to families and staff to be able to plan for when students attend and when they do not. And because the school district, of course, does not celebrate any holidays as a public entity, it certainly observes holidays based on legal holidays, and certainly, at the same time, recognizes and teaches kids about the various holidays. You actually heard Ms. Royer speak to that in her comments earlier about the work we do in our elementary media centers and the literature we provide to our students. So with that, that's the recommendation for the calendar for 2021-2022, and would be happy to take any questions that the committee has.
Any questions or comments on the proposed calendar? There being none? Okay, this will be posted, so anybody can make public comment before our vote on the 24th. Great. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, next, we have our minutes. So we have minutes from our workshops held on February 22nd and March 3rd, 2021, and from our school committee meeting held on February 24th, 2021. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant-in aid requirements, Purpose 7. Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair so declares, Purpose 3. The Shrewsbury Education Association Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Sub move. Second.
Will call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Myself?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.